Call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. We'll start with a roll call.
Time.
At 7:03, thank you, Mike.
Jane Lowery.
Right, Jane.
John Derteren.
Tom McGinn.
Rich Canom.
Roger Moran.
Tad Redway.
Mia Raiton, Town Attorney.
Murray Gerji, Secretary.
Okay. The first order of business is the approval of agenda. We will then have an approval of minutes for April 2nd and April 16th. We have three pending applications. Du Bois livestock, agricultural composting operations, a conditional use permit renewal, determination of completeness. Item two is Parker Woods Drive expansion, a private way application. Item three is Goss Mill Brook Dam removal, a conditional use pre-application. And then we have the planner's report and general discussion.
May I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of April 2nd.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of April 2nd. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Yeah. Stayed very good.
Okay.
I was not present.
Okay. The motion passes. Four in favor, two abstentions. The minutes of April 16th. Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? And then an abstention. Five in favor, one abstention. On to the next item. Pending applications. The first item up is Du Bois livestock.
Mr. Chairman, we don't really know why we put it on the agenda. We filed some recusals based on bias in relation to the entire board and to the town planner, Tad Redway, and we've heard nothing as far as when there's going to be a delay on those issues and whether there's been any meetings or whatever in relation to that. So at this point, I believe it's appropriate just to have our matter removed from the calendar until that whole issue gets resolved.
The issue of bias is a decision that this board has to make in terms of whether or not there is bias in existence, and we plan on addressing that before we get to your application. But that being said, it has come to the attention of this board that there's a great deal of discussion whether or not the town planner can make a determination of the completeness of an application. According to the bylaws for the Arundel Planning Board, Section 4, Duties of the Officers, the Chair, Section D says, "The Chair shall be responsible for or may delegate upon appropriate terms and conditions the following." Item number one, preparation of meeting agenda. Since this is in my purview, the board has had a policy of allowing the town planner to determine if an application was complete. If the application was not complete, the town planner followed my directive that they not be placed on the agenda because we did not want to have to have multiple hearings concerning how that application was to proceed. So from an issue of the town planner blocking anything coming to this planning board based on its incompleteness, he is following the directives that this board has laid out. The second issue is the one that Mr. Federer has brought up concerning bias. There's been a great deal made of the alleged bias of this planning board. Before we proceed to discuss the matter at hand, we're going to address this thorny issue. And to that effect, I have asked the town attorney to discuss bias and how it is determined.
Okay. So on that note, I basically pulled what I consider to be the primer on this subject from MMA's website, and it's a really good overview and indulged me while I just kind of lay it out for you. So the whole point of bias, conflict of interest, is under that umbrella of due process, that every applicant, of course, has the right to have a fair and impartial objective hearing of whatever is before any municipal board. And that's really the overarching concept, and under that concept is our two concepts, the conflict of interest and the other is bias. They're very related because both, of course, would result in an applicant not getting a fair shake of things, but they're a little bit different, and I'm just going to go through and describe what they are. The first concept is conflict of interest, and that's more financial in nature. So there's actually a statutory definition of conflict of interest, and I won't, again, I'm not going to bore you with too many details, but in essence, that means that anybody on the board who would be hearing a matter has a 10% or more interest in a business or the stock of that business that is coming before you. So if any of you have some kind of business interest, 10% or more owner of a business that is before you, in this case, with Du Bois livestock, then that would by law make it, it would require you to recuse yourself from hearing from that matter. So that's the statutory definition. Then there's actually a case law definition that's a little bit broader, and it's basically, I am going to redo the definition under this case. The case is lessier, devious, and hazardous. And basically, it says that when the town official, by reason of his interest, is placed in a situation of temptation to serve his own personal interest to the prejudice of the interest of the applicant. Okay? So again, that's a financial thing. It's not quantified, 10%, but it still means that you have some kind of financial interest that you could benefit from. Again, we're still in the conflict of interest prong here. Then there's an even broader, a broader concept where it's even the appearance of impropriety. Again, still conflict of interest. It deals about, it deals with money. So that's the conflict of interest side of the due process debate or concern. Then we get into bias, which is less financially related and more relational or state of mind. So let me go through that a little bit more. Again, there is a statutory prohibition that if you are related to an applicant or an interested party by blood or marriage, then that is something that would, you'd be biased. That's within, I think they say, the sixth degree. So we're talking cousins, which is hard in a small town, right? Because sometimes you don't even know who you're related to. But in any event, if you know that you have some kind of blood relationship or through marriage to an applicant, then you need to recuse yourself according to law. Then there's also another concept of bias, which is more state of mind. Okay? So that's not relationship. It's more about that you can't, you're so biased against a particular applicant that it would be unfair to hear his or her application. Now, that's pretty broad, so let's kind of talk about some examples in the case law as to when that would be, some examples. And incidentally, the burden of proof of establishing bias is on the person who's alleging it. So in many cases, in the sitting board, they would realize, oh, wait, I can't hear this, and raise the issue themselves and say, I'm so biased, or not so biased, but I cannot properly hear this. They put to the board, I need to be refused, and they step away. That doesn't mean they can't participate as a member of the public, because sometimes you might be in a butter, and it might be something of interest to you that you can in your capacity as a citizen, as a citizen of the town, make commentary on, but you need to physically remove yourself so it's very clear that you're not in any way deliberating on or participating in the decision. Okay? So in that case, the applicant doesn't have to come up. If you know you have that kind of conflict of interest, then you need to just identify it, and then the board can excuse you. Alternatively, as a board member, if you happen to know that somebody is the sister of or has a business interest in, you actually have a duty to raise that and then vote amongst yourselves whether or not that person should be refused if they don't want to be. All right? So other examples of when it would be appropriate to recuse oneself for bias, or for this board to ask somebody to recuse themselves, or vote to have them not participate, is if there is some kind of personal grudge that was so deep and everyone knew about it, or that somebody was out in the town saying, you know, applications of this kind, they have said publicly, I will never approve a filament length. I will never approve a junkyard. Or, my grandfather had a junkyard, and therefore I love junkyards. I mean, those kinds of things. Very clear statements that you can't be objective in a particular kind of application. Also, if prior to being on the planning board, you may have said something in public about all junkyards or all whatever. So does that, does that make sense? Is that kind of a?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, obviously, there's a grade to everything, but when in doubt, disclose and have your, have a discussion about any potential conflict of interest or bias that you think may be an issue, because of course, the reason is, as I said, due process is important and is legally required. So those are your obligations and duties. Now, at this point, you can say, hey, I think I have one, or if that's not the case, then you, as I said, the applicant who is alleging that there is bias or conflict of interest bears the burden of proof of establishing that. So then you would ask the applicant to make whatever submissions that they deem relevant to the issues that I've talked about, whether it be a financial conflict of interest or if there's some kind of bias because of family relationship or state of mind.
Thank you. Counselor makes my point. Okay? We work on the agenda board. We ought to have the burden of proof, okay? We have examination questions we'd like to ask the board because we're very concerned about issues involving bias, okay? I have a hard time believing there was a reason when we took our, we filed our renewal permit December 9th, okay? All of a sudden, with less than four or five days' notice, we're here just saying four and a half months later, okay?
Mr. Federer, can I, can I stop you for just a minute? I think because we're discussing Du Bois livestock right now, I need to recuse myself. I didn't think we were in the midst of a discussion, but I am in a butter, so therefore I ask to be excused.
So at this point, you know, we definitely want the opportunity to be prepared for this particular hearing before we begin the Du Bois livestock. To ensure that, you know, I want to feel good that nobody's prejudiced, but if I find someone that is, and I ask a question, they realize that they are, okay, I want the opportunity, okay, for that person to be able to step down. Or if the entire board doesn't feel that they can be fair, then I want that too. And the same thing goes with Tad Redway. I understand you may have told him to hold on to a permit, okay, for four and a half months. That's highly unusual and not only unfair, I think it's an abuse of your power. Mr. Federer? Yes. I ask that this item be placed on the agenda tonight specifically to address the issue of whether the application was complete or incomplete, and in the process of doing so, decided that we should address this issue of bias, which has appeared in public in print. If you have proof that a member of this board is biased, I would ask you to present that proof now. Well, you can't because I'm entitled to due process, and I don't have to do it, and you have to give me the opportunity to do that. This is all about notice and the right to be heard, okay? That's one of the reasons, okay? The reason is you're biased. You keep forcing these things, you keep talking about it, and you say, right now, you've got to do this. But I don't have to because I'm entitled, okay, to a reasonable hearing on that issue, and you're not giving me one. So, you know, I suggest that you suspend whatever you're doing now, set us for two weeks from now, and we'll come back in and we'll explore the issue of bias, and I want it on the agenda as bias so we can go through it. Mr. Federer, I will be more than happy to have that placed on the agenda at some point in the future. In the meantime, we are going to discuss the incompleteness or lack thereof or completeness, whatever that case turns out to be, of an application that we have received, which has also caused a great deal of consternation among the citizenry of the town, between you, between us, between all of the citizens. So we are going to discuss whether or not that application is complete. You have said, you have said that this application is complete. Can you tell me why? We are going to resolve the issue of bias, which includes you, okay, before we ever allow anything to forward with Du Bois livestock. You have a meeting on move to have it stricken because of the fact that, you know, with bias, it's Du Bois. And at this point, I think I've got. I'm going to let the town attorney address this issue.
I guess, just to unravel a little bit of where we are, because I hear Mr. Federer saying he'd like to have a hearing on the issue. And, you know, obviously, whatever you decide as far as how you want to move forward, that's entirely within the board's fayaway. I would just say this, is that, two things. First, that Mr. Federer has said that he's entitled to have a hearing on the issue. I think that there's, that's absolutely true. He certainly has, well, Du Bois has every right to present whatever evidence, to have you hear whatever evidence they think is germane to this issue. However, I don't think that duty includes the right to cross-examine the board unless they put forward first some straight-faced evidence or some foundational evidence that raises the issue. And, you know, at this point, I haven't heard anything other than, I think you might be biased. I don't know if that raises, rises to the level. If there's something that says, I saw you at the grocery store saying X, or I know that you wrote a letter to somebody saying Y, or any of the kinds of examples that I had given before that could lead to the conclusion that there is either a bias relationship-wise or more likely in the state of mind, I think is the point. But I don't, I haven't seen anything in my travels in municipal law that says that applicants have the right to sort of essentially ask questions of or cross-examine every single board member unless and until there is some foundational evidence to establish that one of you or all of you have some kind of bias. If there is that evidence put forward that gets over that threshold, then I think absolutely there's a right to establish whether or not you can be fair-minded. But I don't think that the right to due process entitles somebody to essentially interview every panel member or board.
Well, certainly, you're out to a hearing, and you have to be able to have the opportunity to bring up threshold evidence for this board. And at this point, I'm kind of screwed.
And I think that's a fair point. If, and again, it's entirely up to you. If this issue, I mean, I know that the applicants have certainly raised the issue of bias. Whether or not they should have been prepared to come and address that issue this evening is up to you to determine. I haven't seen the agenda for this meeting. I hear that it wasn't on there. That's something you can decide that in any, you may decide that, sure, if you want to have a hearing and allow the applicant time to present the evidence, fine. But I don't think that it is necessary to allow the applicant to interview you in order, essentially, you know, one could argue that's a fishing expedition. But by the same token, if there is evidence that somebody is biased and this board hears that evidence and determines that he is and should recuse himself, then that's another story.
At all, it's time to do it. Set me on the agenda, you weigh everything out, put everything else on the agenda, we'll have that hearing first. Got to check my calendar and find out when the next meeting is.
Yeah, I think that's the first meeting in two weeks.
Two weeks is the, yeah.
There's four.
That would be the 21st, which is a backup.
That's our public hearing.
That's our public hearing. So then we are looking at the first possible date of June 11th.
That's the town meeting.
That's, that's the night after that.
After coming.
That's the second Thursday in June. Mr. Redway, will you put that on the agenda for us?
Yes, sir.
Item number one.
June 11th.
And we will determine, the purpose of that hearing will be to determine whether or not there is bias by the board. Is that true?
Question.
Yes.
Hearing by whom?
Mr. Federer and the Du Bois will be able to present factual proof that we are biased.
Who, who will be the judge?
The board is the judge. We actually get to vote. It's similar to saying whether or not you should recuse yourself.
Correct.
Because you're in a butter. We would make that determination.
Or financial.
And in this case, he shall present the evidence that he has, and we will make a determination as to whether or not individually any of us are biased. That being said, and I'm going to have to ask the town attorney, does that raise the issue? Can we proceed forward to determine whether or not the application is complete or incomplete?
And here's what I would say, is that to me, the bias issue is a threshold issue, and, and the determination of completeness tends to be, I would argue, a fairly administrative determination. If you have an ordinance provision that says, boom, 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 you check the box, this is what is required, then arguably, that is not a difficult decision to make. Now, given the circumstances, if the applicant feels that they don't want you even to make that determination until the bias determination is made, then I think that that is a fair, fair thing. If, however, the applicant feels that it really is a very administrative decision because the ordinance says, this is what you need in order to have a complete application, if they are willing to at least understand that before they get into bias on the substance of the application, then I think that that's something that you could ask them.
I don't believe it's just merely administrative. I believe there's a lot of work to it, so I really think it'd be, it'd be the smarter thing to kick everything over to June 11th or two weeks after, two weeks after the hearing, whichever gentleman feels best.
Given that you don't think that it is a purely administrative, check-off-the-box situation, then we will delay this until June 11th, when we have the determination of whether or not there is bias. Thank you. Comments?
Since it is an item on the agenda, should we have a formal motion and approval?
To table it?
Yes.
Yeah, we probably should.
Well, as a non-chair, I will make the motion, the really same, what you just said, that we table both item one, both the issues until June 11th or thereafter. Sorry.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of tabling this item to June 11th? Motion unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay. Next item up on the agenda. Parker Woods Private Expansion, a private way application. Proposal to extend Parker Woods Drive 1,300 linear feet and to make improvements to the entire length of the private way to meet the construction standards for a road servicing three to seven residential lots on a 40.4 acre site located at 183 Downing Road, tax map 26, lots three and three C in the R4 Shoreland Overlay and the NRC zoning district. Troy Parker is the owner, and William Walsh, the third DP, is the owner of the agents. See, Mr. Parker is here, and I'm not committed to whoever William Walsh is, so I don't know if he's here or not.
He is not here.
He is not here. Okay. We held a site walk this evening at 6:00. We went out and looked at it. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Parker?
So could we have some feedback?
Uh, yeah.
We met, I mean, we met, you guys feel free to fill in any ones. We, you know, met, we walked the, there about the center line of the road, you know, reviewed topo, saw a few drainage swales that cross it, you know, general discussion on where through the outlots were going to be, and, you know, general discussion in the journey.
And didn't see any deer.
Didn't see any deer.
There's, there will be.
More evidence of bait.
A drainage culvert. It's the word of the meeting. There's going to be an 18-inch drainage culvert going under?
No.
No?
What was the size? Yeah. I have to check the plan, but I think it's 15 or 18.
Okay.
Then those 15 and 18. That's erosion.
Well, other than that, I mean, everything looked pretty good. It's, it's, it's very nice.
A little better than this one than last week.
It's almost existing. The new road is, I showed these guys, the change in New York there is, there was an old farm road in there.
Toe road.
Toe road. And we're just moving over a little bit in a few locations to meet the new property lines, but the topography is pretty, I would say, 85% of the field, and it's pretty low. There's a couple of, except one big drainage swale in the middle. Other than that, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's like he proposed a 24, a couple hundred feet from the cul-de-sac. That would be it then, yeah?
Yep.
About 350 feet from the cul-de-sac. Yep.
They can upset that.
We had some discussion about the roads being moved a little bit further to the east so that it, so that it doesn't cross Mr. Parker's property line. It's been moved off completely.
We have a note in here that that staff has found a slight increase in stormwater discharge, stormwater discharge. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, there was, you know, Bill, that would be a better question for Bill, but it was a very slight increase that he didn't believe was going to be enough to trigger, to trigger anything to stay under the amount of this. He's, he's already put in his permit by rule to DCP and sent the plans to them, and he didn't get any response back. That was going to be an issue or a problem.
The permit by rule for a wetland crossing?
Stormwater.
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 Because they've got a.
Sumo water.
That's right.
That's right.
I think the issue, Troy, is we have two ordinance, two sections of the ordinance. What it was talking about was, he was talking about stormwater management, in which you can't have more than, five CFS discharged before you have to do treatment. And then in private ways, there's a higher standard, which is, which is basically zero peak one-off increase, and that's in section, 77B, two. E. Two, I think it is.
Yeah. B, two, E.
Yeah. And basically, that says, yeah, zero. Now, point seven is.
Pretty close to zero.
It's, there was, that's not percentage, that's in cubic feet per second, so it's about 1.5% increase, that's all. But that's up to the board, you know, determining the zero peak. But that's up to the board, you know, determining the zero peak. But that, it is an increase, that's the only issue that I saw. The only other thing the board has to also be aware of is that the applicant's been asked for a waiver on doing test pits in the existing area, the existing surface, to determine whether or not it meets the existing road standards for the full three to seven, which would be, it would need an 18 inches of gravel in there. And we need confirmation one way or the other that there's 18 inches of gravel underneath that. So I would ask Bill, get an alternative to digging holes.
Isn't a core sample something?
Yeah, well, they've asked for a waiver.
Yeah, right.
I thought, I'm envisioning a backup, so.
No, core sample. They've asked for that waiver, which you have to act on.
In the parts where we're widening, you'll be able to see, when I dig up the road actually to widen, it will be visible on both sides of the existing road, just like a, just like a set that test pit would.
Well, that's why, why not just take it on the edge of the road right now?
Because we're going to do a box cut on both sides of the existing. When you do the box cut to widen, the underlaying gravel will be raked in.
Yeah, but what I was saying just right now, take a shovel and see how much gravel you got on the side there. Just a verification that there's 18 inches.
Yeah, I got a little problem even digging a test hole. I can cut the tar and dig a hole. I do have, which I can supply, or some civil analysis of the gravel spec, which usually we have to supply when we're building a town road, but, you know, the MDOT, the six inch minus gravel spec, so I can produce gravel specs on the road.
Okay. Is that, Troy, the original built road, or what you're going to be building?
For both.
Oh, right, so you do have that data from when the road was originally built?
Yeah. But it's no problem for me to take two or three points in that old portion and dig a few, dig a few holes up with a small mini excavator.
I think rather than rip it up or anything, just.
Right. I would suggest that, and having his engineer go out there and write a letter to us, if your engineer's comfortable, saying, you know, what do you observe?
Right, as long as it's an engineer.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, he's enlisted the services of an engineer, so it shouldn't be a huge imposition.
What do you think about the net increase?
In a 25-year score, I mean, the ordinance is conflicting in some degree, where, you know, he referenced the portion of it that does allow for a five CFS increase, yet with the private way standard is pretty cut and dry on zero. You know, by and large, a less than one CFS increase in a 25-year score, I don't see it as a major impact, but is the board comfortable getting around that to approve that with that noted increase?
My question on that, not being an engineer, I don't know the answer, but if it's such a small difference, isn't that easily taken care of, maybe doing a wider swale or, you know, something very minor when you're doing the construction?
Water shit routing or some sort? There's no way to know. You'd have to, you'd have to model.
Like a little retention pond kind of thing? Because you're going to be digging there anyway.
It's always better for the deer. It's a water, water goal.
I mean, I don't know how much work, how much extra work that is, but it seems like it's so minor that it might not even affect anything. Maybe, I don't know, maybe make wider or deeper ditches or something like that.
Well, you don't want to make.
I'm not sure how widening, because I'm not the engineer either, but I'm not so sure that widening or the ditches will gain that. Is that right, Tad? I don't, I don't think it does.
Actually, it'll increase it.
Yeah.
You don't want to increase velocity.
And you can't. You can't change the volume.
But, I, I mean, actually, if you were to do it, you'd need an award.
You can't change the volume of flow just by ditching.
Right. Is, is. By impeding it, by putting a detention.
If you speed it up or slow it down, that doesn't change volume.
Yeah, it's not going to change volume. And this doesn't change the volume either. We're talking about the peak discharge, and I'm talking about volume. Volume's increasing.
Well, speed deterrence is easy, but you put a couple of.
And that's what I'm wondering, if you could do, even if you had some area to put a couple of ditch turnouts in, or some check dams. Anything like that. I find it hard to believe you couldn't tweak the model to.
I can run that by Bill, but that's a good option. That, I would be surprised, I haven't gone through this plan with a fine-tooth comb, but I would have thought there would have been some stone check dams every hundred feet anyway.
I don't think he did, because it was pretty flat out. I don't think it was that concerned. I didn't see them in the storm.
They don't generally, I just, it's funny, this is coming up, because I just had to do this, oh, this DEP class, it's now mandatory for soil erosion sanitation, that was at the Kettibunk Fire Station. They, they don't like to put those in place. They prefer to shed instead of putting those in place now, but where needed, they definitely just don't want to just color the water, or it goes into the resource, and those do help with that, but they prefer to shed the water with blooming seed and less than a few reeds. But check dams and stone check dams are one of their approved methods, and it's a pretty easy thing to do, that I think probably would gain you that little bit.
It would. I think James' suggestion's good.
Yeah, I mean, you could tweak that model. I'm not going to incriminate myself by saying.
He won't have a problem doing that.
My feeling is, my feeling is that the amount we're talking about is so small, if the applicant makes a good faith effort to, you know, try to.
It wouldn't take much. Seems like it wouldn't take much. The other, the other question I have, just, and you may not know the answer, in looking at this, I haven't had too much time to study this, but I see, and I don't know if it's existing houses or proposed, but he's got some rooftop area included in his stormwater calculation. It very well could be from your existing houses. I think it is. Make sure it's not, he hasn't included any for any proposed houses, because that's not part of our analysis. You know? And that could help, just, and these calculations are very broad, you know, it goes, the curve numbers are in whole number increments, and really, you know, you can, you can tweak it a fraction and it drops from a 78 to a 77, and all of a sudden, you're, you know, four CFS lower, you know, whatever the case might be. So it's sort of, it's a, it's an older rudimentary model that has been adapted for the computer world, and it, it doesn't, you know, it really just doesn't give you that fine-tuning capability sometimes. So, you know, if he did include that, it may be worth, worth asking. Right, okay.
The horrible truth is TR-55 is not supposed to use, reuse with water sheds less than 28%.
Right, yeah, we're, I mean, it's, yeah, meant for large.
We'd be better off with rational evidence in this situation.
Yeah.
Have Bill give me a call.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Were there any issues?
No.
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 It's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's nice, but.
The only thing is, the ground is a little wetter tonight than it was last week.
Yeah, it was a little drier last week after, before we had four inches of rain, but. Yeah, no big, you know, no real steep areas that I would foresee as a drainage problem that, you know, be a chronic thing that. The only drainage issue out there is the urinal soil. Yeah. What are you talking about? The urinal plant.
It's all with our soil.
Assuming that.
Nothing would it sign.
Assuming that there are no other questions for the applicant, the next step will be to place this on the agenda for a public hearing.
Yes, when?
The biggest problem that that creates is that the next two meetings that we have scheduled are public hearing meetings.
Well, actually, that, that's not true, because the 21st is not a regular meeting.
Right.
That'd be the 3rd.
Oh, you're right. The 14th is the next regular meeting.
That's right.
14th of May.
14th of May, it's the next regular, the next scheduled public hearing.
Should have picked up on that earlier. Did you want to, you need to contact the DuBois and see if they want to go then?
Might as well.
Yeah, I mean, that way, we aren't pushing out another month. Or they're pushing themselves out another month, whatever.
I'll notify them and say that we do have a time on the 14th, and we can get that going then.
Yep, that'll work.
Question, that means, yeah, well, the question for you is, I'd like to have them to have a response ASAP, either a yes or no, if they go on, do it the 14th.
If they can't do it on the 14th, the next date would be the 28th.
Okay, I think we should remove this till the complaints are posted, we're still in this application.
Okay, so, somebody want to make a motion?
Motion, public hearing, Friday, 14th.
A motion's been made, we have a public hearing for Troy's application on the 14th of May. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have to bring up, I wasn't positive, I guess I assumed it'd be, it would still be meeting every week, but I thought.
Only for the month of May, because of public hearings.
Okay, I thought it was up until the town meeting, or nothing.
I do have good news for you.
Yeah.
There's no meeting next week. But yeah, because of, because of the way the public hearings are being.
Yeah.
They're going on the first and third. They're going to be on the first and third.
Okay, we'll do our second and fourth meeting.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to place Troy's application for a public hearing on May 14th. All those in favor? And opposed, it's unanimous.
Questions along the way?
Yeah, my.
Did we ever determine that this should include the application?
I'm thinking we must have.
Two weeks ago.
We must have, because.
I, I'm just.
We do.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good point, but, that's a good point. I'm, I'm thinking we must have, because we got to this point.
Yeah, I think that was done at the last meeting.
Just try to, I'm trying to answer that question before it gets shoved off for another.
The mention.
Yeah, okay. Now, we've been asked to notify the Historical Society, because they want to be in on this next discussion, so we're going to take a five-minute break at 7:45. We'll be back here at 7:50.
Can Bill call you?
Yeah.
What is going to be, Phil, let me just pause this.
Pause.